Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the 2023 Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District Annual Reorganization Meeting. The first item on the agenda, welcome in public comments. If you have any public comments. Not hearing any, not seeing any in this participation, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is to election of a board chair. I'll take nominations from the floor for board chair.
Nominate Ken Swirin.
Is there a second? A second. Are there any other nominations for chair?
Move nomination close.
Okay, nomination ceased. All those in favor of Ken as board chair, please indicate by saying aye. Looks unanimous. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the board meeting over to you.
Hey, we need a motion, our nomination for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Dane Whitman.
Any other nominations?
Move nomination close.
All in favor of Dane, vice chair of the chairman?
Aye.
Clerk, a motion for a nominee for clerk.
I move Jackie Kelly, clerk.
Any other nominations?
Move close nomination.
All in favor of Jackie for clerk?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few more things we have to cover. We have to approve the meeting place at this assembly room or online, depending on the conditions I have. Can we have a motion to approve the meeting place?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting time, at the present time, we meet on the second Monday of the month at 10:00 a.m. here at Newsweek. Southwest Tech Center. Does anybody have a discussion that makes it difficult for them, they want to bring anything up about this time?
Leon, I think it's a pretty good time to meet. The reason for that is is that it allow time for administrators and instructors that necessary to attend the school board meeting during a regular time, you won't have to come in at night. And if we needed to leave a board meeting for some reason to visit, take a tour in the school, we have the privilege of being able to do that by shorting out board meetings and things, and we're right here. All board members present would be here to do it. So I'm in favor of keeping the meeting at ten o'clock in the morning for those reasons.
Great point, thank you. Any others?
I'd like to agree with what Leon brought up, and as well as when we have presentations from staff members, it's also convenient for them, more convenient than staying after school.
Plus, I think it's important that we do have the Zoom capability of being, if it's one time, it's inconvenient someone to wear their job and they can't make it, they can always attend my show. Okay, can we have a motion to approve that time at ten?
Asher Edelson, approve.
Second, Leon, all in favor? Aye, I am. Meeting dates, okay, we have attached in front of us a list of meeting dates. Okay, and again, as you can see, like a list there, we have a meeting, as we say, the second Tuesday of every month, except in July, we have that month off, and then sometimes we do have February off after the budget has been approved, and there was no meeting, but we do have the flexibility in case something really important comes up, the superintendent needs us, that we can call it. Okay, so that's a schedule. Thank you.
May to approve them later. May to approve these dates?
Yes.
Approve meeting dates, right?
Yes.
All those who approve, meeting dates have to then outside there?
Okay, move second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, next, RBG committees. We have Mrs. Redding.
I was going to say, one of the things that you should have done was acknowledge, since this is the first board meeting, new board members and for the public that may be watching all the board members that are on here, to be able to say just anything along that line, if that, okay, I forgot.
I meant to do, I meant to do that at the opening, and I forgot to do that.
Right, everyone, I forgot to mention it too. When it's convenient for the chair, you don't mind.
Right now, we have Mr. Sauer here, who's our new member, but we're missing one. I don't see him on.
Tim Kane informed us that he has collapsed in the morning, he teaches a class, but he couldn't be there today.
Okay, for the rest of us here, we have a, everybody should have that in their pack, a list of all committees. Educational Facility Finance Policies Committee, Superintendents' Evaluation, and so forth. What the superintendent would like everybody to do is to look at that list, especially a new member, and select one or two committees you'd like to serve on, and add it, and you can take it and pass it over to Mrs. Redding over there, or if you can't make up your mind, you can send her an email, and she will update this list for our next meeting.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Just one thing with the committees, the negotiations committee, negotiations for the ESP unit. There are two days scheduled in April, April 3rd and April 5th at 5:30, so I ask that maybe that committee gets defined before then, so we can have our presentation at those negotiations.
Are you interested, Fran? Are you interested in negotiations there?
Sure.
Yeah. Anybody else interested in negotiations? It does take a long time.
I think you probably have.
Do we need a motion, Mike, to make Fran representative of negotiations?
I'll move that.
Okay. It may be legal, we have a motion by Leon, just a couple of seconds, to make Leon our negotiations chair.
You can, Fran, be on there.
Okay, the next is a school board's agenda, yes.
There's two more on the required approval on the three four, with paper of record and all forms signed at the bottom there.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you said the bottom.
Yeah, we're working with two pages.
I'm looking at it. Okay, so we need a paper of record. In other words, anything, we put out contracts or anything like this, we have to post it in the newspaper, and our local newspaper will be the Bennington Press. Do you have a motion, Mike?
So, sir.
Leon, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, another one is the approval of warrants and signers.
I have a reason, I was doing a long committee of signatures, and I wanted to just make a comment at this particular time that to all of the board members to not be reluctant to sign up for a particular board. It's not a, it's not a matter of fact that you have a knowledge in the background in those particular areas to be a committee member. There you go, Vermont School Board, trains, and board members, and what to do, and what to talk about, and so you're going to get all that, but we want to urge, especially the new board members to venture out into some of these committees to work.
And, and one convenient thing about these committees is, for last year, they met right after our meeting, so you don't have to come in for an extra day sometime, usually right after ours, perhaps, or before. We have a motion then to approve the chair, vice chair, and clerk as warrant signers.
So. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now. We have, and the third sheet is this school board code of ethics. Okay, now, I think the master sheet is over there. And what this is, is recommended by the School Board Association. You'll sign this, basically, you're not going to cut each other's throat if you're going to do things correctly. And this is rear information, and if you want, you don't have to. This is not something you're forced to do, but they'll come around. Next is a list of the board members, their addresses, their phone numbers, and their emails, that's all. We didn't want to communicate with other board members, but remember, you can't get into a group of, say, what is it, four or five people discussing issues or, because that becomes a meeting, and that's illegal. So, you know, one-on-one's okay, when you start getting more than that, it's not a good idea. Because you could think you're going to do something like that, people can get warned and look into your records and find out that you did something illegal, so please be careful.
Okay. Ken, you are, and before we get off that, you mentioned the consent of work of Vermont from the Vermont School Board, did I?
Well, go ahead, take a minute, you've been pretty active with that group lately.
I'm trying to make sure that the general public understands what it means that we as a board is doing, and that all of the board members appear to, so in that packet, it had operating, a law for an ethical board. And in there, and talking to, I mean, the VA, the SBA strongly recommended all the board members read and understand, and try to adhere to all of these things. Board members need to be clear that they have no legal authority outside the contents of this board room. I'm not in a board meeting, so as an individual, you are not representing the software on chat. You have the power at this meeting to present things and rule and decide on actions that you can take in as a group. So everybody needs to understand that. People are going to approach you, I think Ken was talking about, and you need to be able to listen, because we were representatives of the community, and then pass those particular comments on to the board chair, or the superintendent, so that we can put them on the agenda if necessary to add on. The other thing that the board members must ensure that the school is well-run, and, and we are not here to run the school. That's why we have administrators, and that's why we have a superintendent to run the school, but we want to make sure that the school is well-run. So what that means is that we need to read the documents, we need to understand the operations of what the inner workings of the school, and verify to the extent that we have, I understand, we agree, it's functioning, it's working, and it's an effective manner. So that's what our job is, and the board members, I mean, the school board is pointing that out. Board members must avoid actual or perception of conflict of interest. And perception of conflict of interest in terms of that. So you can read about those particular things out there, that are sometimes in a small school, in a small area of board, there may be, may not be, that may be something that we may have to rule on as a board, or a superintendent, because of this particular policy, and if those things come up, we can rule on that and say, yes, we have an acceptance, there's no direct conflict of interest here, and so forth along that line, be aware of those things, and so we'll move forward. The next thing, that the board members must maintain confidential allergy in terms of executive session. We can't say that or not, we're saying that there are some things that we go into executive session, we meet first at the board, and then go into executive session to talk about the workings of the, of the school that will put the school at a disadvantage if we were to discuss these things out in the public, in terms of evaluation of the superintendent, a contract that we needed to be able to talk about, and, and approve, or discuss the workings of that particular contract before it's awarded. It's things like that, that we have to spell out and go in executive session to talk about, and then come out and have, take actions on, and the things that how we, the pros and cons of the discussion in executive session should stay in executive session. So everybody needs to be aware of those particular things. So I want, then Vermont, they have the ethics, oh, act within the scopes of my official role, and they talk about the organization and the roles that we needed to do, act within your role, I think I touched a little bit on that earlier. Uphold the highest ethical standards. Everybody, whether you like it or not, if you are a board member, and people see you, they show some respect for this, for your position. Kids, parents, respect you as a, as a board member, show some ethical respect yourself, so that we can be effective in what we do, and, and continue to go on to be effective at the school board. The respect my peers and constituents and confidential allergy consideration. We're all individuals. We all have different backgrounds, different point of views, and we should listen and respect those particular point of views, and make sure the chair or that things that we discuss in terms of our background, point of view, that it doesn't put the board at a disadvantage, and it doesn't affect the effectiveness of the board in terms of the information that's in here that may affect another board member. So those are the things that I might want to cover. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I missed more, I'm going on, public comments. The, the, the public comment section, everybody should be realizing that that's the session where we have time allotted for individuals to come in from the public, to be able to discuss something, and to cheer, and to do all of that, and then to connect in terms of times, and the comments control, so that we won't be able to do certain things in that, and just because it is a public comment section, it is not a, the meeting is not a public comment, to be able to say any and everything that you want to at that meeting by the public. So we have to be aware of the fact that certain things in terms of comments that may affect administrators, and the staff, and the board, that may put us at a substantial risk, we may have to go to, and they have to write that up and document it, and send it into the board as it's supposed to have, open discussion and so forth, back and forth, so it's a one-way thing, but a minute is one of the do that, and we already talked about executive sessions, I think that's enough, wow, I have a here. In terms of, for what I need to do, there's a few more others, but either get the chips or what it is that we're trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would also recommend that if you go on the BSBA site, you can get a weekly email from them on updates on any of the new proposed laws from the legislature, and anything else that's important for the state of Vermont, so just go online, and BSBA, the Vermont School Board Association, sign up for their newsletter, and once a week, we get a nice little report of what's going on in the state, it's pretty valuable. Okay, we also now have a list here of our officers and our membership, and when their board members' terms are acquired. As you can see, here we go, four, four, and three. Then we have, this is really, we have a list of all the employees of the Southwest Tech, their group number, what they teach. So if we have to get in touch with any, or you'd like to get in touch, but like Leon says, when you call these individuals up with something, you're just a regular citizen, you're not a school board member at that point, you're only a school board member when we mean as group, not individually. Okay, anything else to go? Okay, now we can start. Okay, on the agenda, we did the call to order, welcome, public comments for reorganization, now we're on the consent agenda. So I don't sure if you know how this works, but when we have meetings, the next meeting, we have to approve the minutes, which were the discussions and all of the precautions we made, and we have to approve payroll warrants and vendor warrants, and so, this is something that happens every time. Okay, let's start with the minutes from the RGP board meeting of January 9th.
And most to approve the minutes.
Okay, approve the minutes, we have a second, by Mr. Cutler. Any discussion on the minutes here, here, if you had said something and it was quoted in the minutes that you feel you didn't say or misrepresented, you can make adjustments to the minutes. Okay, you see none, all in favor? Put your hand by.
Aye.
Minutes of a policy committee, Monday, January 9th, twenty, twenty, motion to accept.
I motion to accept.
Okay. Second. Any discussion, corrections on the policy? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the annual meeting, this is a floor meeting we just had last week over at the firehouse. Motion to accept those.
I'll move, second, third.
Second, Asher. Okay, any questions, is there none, all in favor?
Aye.
This is the annual conference.
Yes.
Minutes, this is what the inner workings of the school board is, documentation is of what we give. Those in minutes, you may get a question from someone, you can refer to the minutes and saying, read the minutes, make sure they are correct, because they get posted online on our website, and by month, and year, and so forth, so if you, if you want to, you can go back and read all of the minutes from last year, and vice versa, and what happened out here, so that you can get a better understanding for how the board has acted in the past months and years.
I actually opened up a question on the Monday, January 9th. Minutes, I just noticed the typo, that I think is unfortunate, it's the third to last paragraph, and it says, this is a funding issue, not a governess one, and it should be governments.
Governess.
Correct spelling correction.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
Governance, governance is a word.
Yes, but in the, in the minutes it says governess, governess.
Oh, yes. It should have been governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have payroll warrants, ten twenty-six, ten twenty-eight, ten thirty, ten thirty-two, ten thirty-four, and twenty-two.
So I'll move.
Second. Second, okay. Again, I'm sorry, for these payroll and vendor, when you look through all the warrants, if you have something to question, other, what did we spend $5,000 on a computer for? If you can ask those questions before we approve. Okay, we have the payroll warrants, motion and second, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now the vendor warrants, ten twenty-seven, that's twenty-nine, ten thirty-one, and ten thirty-three, motion?
So I'll move, second.
Second, okay, here, sometimes we have questions on all, so anybody have any questions? We've seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, you should have a cash flow, revenue, and expense pressures report. If you have any questions on that, we can ask our reporters to relay those questions, you can answer for us. Committee reports, policy in January.
I would like to report that the policy committee got a lot done last year. Hoping to get a lot done this year as well. There are a number of policies that we are going to go over during next month's policy committee meeting. If there are any that you feel deserve immediate attention, please let Sandy and myself know, that way they can be added to the agenda. Otherwise, they can be gone over during a future meeting. That's all I've got, thank you.
Just a reminder, Leon had mentioned, with the BSBA, they do have all major policies written, approved legally by their staff lawyers, and if you have any questions, like, you know, if you're writing up a policy or something, just get in touch with them, see if they have a model policy, would save you some time and effort.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, action on a nomination for law enforcement individual, Mike.
Okay, you should have in your packet in the Dropbox, a nomination form for Amanda Knox. She is replacing James Gully as our law enforcement instructor, and actually, her first day is today. You can see there that her background check is in ECIC, all the required checks. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from SUNY Oneonta, and an associate at the Berkeley County Community College. You can see the experience there, she worked at Bennington Elementary as part of their head support team, and also with the Bennington Police Department for several years. You can see the applicants, we received four applicants, three were interviewed, I can see the team there, and we're recommending her appointment today.
On this paper, it says apprentice expires, so what does that mean, the license?
So when you become a new instructor, you are enrolled into the teacher prep program, and you get what's called an apprenticeship license. License is good for a series of three to four years, as they progress into their level one, level two, et cetera licenses, that's all that means.
Any other questions on the nominee? Amanda Knox. Are you saying none, all in favor?
I'll move, seconded.
Any other discussion on Amanda? You see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Again, good morning, everybody, I'd like to start off by congratulating the newly elected and re-elected board members. That would be Glenn Sauer, Timothy Kane, and Dane Whitman. And if we can entertain for a second, just quickly go around the room and state your name and what town you're serving from, that would be great. From my, starting on my left, I think, looks like Asher, and we'll go around the table that way.
Asher Edelson, Bennington.
Frank Kenny Shasberg. Dwayne Bennington.
Jackie Kelly Bennington.
Mike Cutler, Bennington.
Leon Johnson, Bennington.
Glenn Sauer.
Anthony Williams, Bennington.
All right, thank you, everybody. So onto the superintendent's report, the first thing I'd like to turn over to Rebecca Tattersall to speak and the public about our budget, our budget vote that occurred last week.
So I want to thank the board for the support of the budget we had proposed, and it did pass, and just so you know, the percentage has passed by seventy-four point nine-five percent. So we did a great job with the budget vote, so thank you, Dan, for all your support, and laying out there and spreading the word for the budget. And also our articles to move money into both reserve funds, the capital improvements, and the equipment reserve, those two line items also were approved by seventy percent. So we will, once again, in the FY '24 budget, move $20,000 to the equipment reserve, and $60,000 to the capital improvements reserve, so. So thank you very much. Um, and obviously the community recognizes what we're doing here, sees there's a value to it. So, you know, I want to thank the community for their support and again, the board members for supporting it and going out and stretching it to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next piece, I'm gonna personally come on the screen here and show my screen. Uh, you should have in front of you Southwest Tech upcoming events uh, list, uh, highlighted in yellow, and I'll get this up. Meg Constance, our assistant director, is going to uh, show you what a busy couple months we have coming up here at the uh, end of the school year.
Yeah, so as you can see, the uh, spring semester is uh, upon us and very busy. Uh, March teachers generally, program teachers generally start uh, interviewing students for next year. Um, so they are busy interviewing every single student that has applied to their program. We also have some competitions coming up. Uh, this Friday, we have the F L A speak competition. Uh, that is being held at uh, Champlain College, um, and we have twenty-one students attending that. Uh, Pro Start competition is the following weekend, March twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth. We have six students going in there. Hudson Valley, uh, I can't say enough about our school uh, councilman coordinator, Lisa Mertin, who more and more is organizing trips to get our students um, out to college campuses, um, to really help them explore what they're going to do after high school. Um, she's also been working on a lot of articulation agreements with area colleges. So on March twenty-eighth, we'll do a center-wide field trip option available to up to thirty students to get students on the Hudson Valley uh, campus, uh, to tour there. Video productions and human services are doing a joint field trip to N C L A, um, at the end of the month. In April, um, we continue with some, some field trips and state competitions as well as um, some new events that are being tried this year. The first one being, um, Tuesday, March eleventh. Um, we're doing a pilot program this year with fifth grade students from Benel. Um, we're calling it a C S I day, uh, which is a career C N investigator uh, day. The students will come here in the afternoon and um, our program teachers will work within their career clusters to help um, fifth grade students kind of explore various careers that they think they might be interested in. Um, so we're really looking forward to that. Um, Skills USA competition will happen May or April third through the sixth. Students have been busily preparing for uh, those events. M A U does an annual college fair on April sixth. Human services and video productions will go to Castleton University, uh, to do another field trip there. Again, just to expose students to various opportunities. On Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, in the afternoon, we do have a half-day that day. Um, but that afternoon, we're gonna uh, provide a career fair and focus on ninth grade students and their parents um, to invite them into the center to see what uh, Southwest Tech has to offer. A lot of those students have been able to do eighth grade tours, but I think it's a good opportunity for parents also to be able to come in and kind of see what we have to offer. Um, on April twenty-eighth, um, there's a, a joint effort in the community between M A U, Southwest Tech, and various community uh, folks running a reality fair. Uh, that's an opportunity for our eleventh and twelfth graders um, to attend a fair in which they are um, basically assigned a career and they have to go to various vendors, um, to see if their budget uh, allows them certain things like a phone plan, buy a car, cover rent. That's kind of what that fair is all about. It's a great opportunity for students, uh, to kind of see, see where they fall in line as far as everything. We continue with our work keys testing, which we decided to, again, this spring on our one-day event, um, where students who are considered concentrators in our programs um, will have to sit and take our, um, there are free exams within the work keys assessments that they will need to take. That week is also the week that M A U will be doing S P A C testing, so it'll be sort of a testing week as it is, so we're taking advantage of that schedule and uh, we'll do our testing that week. Um, and then Mike has planned center-wide program advisory meetings on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, which again is another half-day. So that afternoon will be advisory community meetings. It's a missing time of year.
Thank you, Meg.
I just, uh, I have a follow-up comments on these things, but because one, this is a great list, and I really, I'm wanting to say something to you, there's three key things on, I think, that is really important to the tech center. And that is to get out and start to get individuals as soon as possible to understand the lifestyle that they may be wanting to trail, starting like at the fifth grade. Kids are super smart these days at early ages. And to be able to see them, uh, understand and think about them all around themselves in the tech world is a phenomenal thing. The, the career fair is, is another one where, where having parents, I think, to invite the parents in. Because there's a big push in the world today and in education in Vermont for tech students to be able to get out here. We need these students in the community, and we need their support. And parents know what they are because they're out there working and they can steer their kids in the right direction to be able to be full productive uh, students in the community, uh, in vengeance. And so the last thing I'm just, that reality fair is another group, again, to put in a punch for the career development center. So these are key things that we need to be aware of that really make, that we contribute in terms of a technical school to provide students support in the community once they leave tech.
Good morning.
Okay, hey, were there any more questions on the events that are coming up? We just thought it would be a interesting way to, this is for, we brought this for the staff, but to also show the board and the community of the activities that we do, you know, undertake on a monthly basis. This is not an exhaustive list. Um, this will be added to as we go on through the marks, the months of March, April, May. Um, you know, this is a very busy time of year when it comes to our uh, Skills USA and our competitions and travel. Uh, so you'll see, we've seen a lot of field trip forms and things coming through. Um, and you know, we knew, we know what we do on a daily basis, but to actually have it written down on paper and look at it, um, it can seem very overwhelming, quite frankly. Uh, and this is, again, this is just a month and a half worth of information here to share with you. So, um, I want to thank Meg for putting this together, uh, for our staff. Uh, and I said we needed to use that, the board meeting on Monday, because it really shows the activity that we have here at school. Um, so I hope that that was helpful. Um, the next item on my agenda I'd like to talk to you about is um, uh, some changes occurring at Southwest Tech. As you know, we, we changed our name from the Career Development Center, um, uh, three years ago, two and a half years ago to Southwest Tech. A lot of things got kind of held up with the pandemic, um, but Southwest Tech has stuck. Um, you'll see a new website very soon. Um, we are all changing our email addresses. Uh, if you've seen on my email address, it's one of the ones that was changed so far. Um, there's a few of us that were changed due to a um, a configuration issue with one of our servers. Um, but everyone will have a new email address within the next month or so, which will end at S W tech dot org. Um, so we'll be dropping that S V C D C um, name and website and address very soon. Um, it's a long time coming, but we're excited about that. And I think the Southwest Tech name, logo, and everything else is working out very well for the school. I, I see it everywhere that I go. So the next thing, um, that I would like to bring up, uh, is a discussion around next year's school calendar. I know several of you have um, asked me about it, um, and it continues to be an issue. And I just want to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that. So each year by April first, um, the superintendents of the region needs to get together and develop a uh, an agreed-upon calendar for the following school year. Um, not usually, usually start that process about February, March, and it's due out in April. Um, April first. It can be modified after April first if need be, but it has to be published by April first. Um, and as you may have noted, um, this past year, there are several series of half-days in the school year. Particularly around January, February, March. Um, and the number of half-days is really impactful to the tech center, um, because students from our sending schools with primarily meeting Arlington, Burn Burton, and Who's At Falls cannot come on those days uh, because they're run as a, as a short half-day. So each class is about forty-five minutes long. So only the students that attend Mount Anthony are able to come those days. Um, and we see that as a huge, a huge inequity for the rest of our schools um, who pay tuition like everyone else does to come to school. We have, we have met the uh, the superintendent of the S V I U, myself, school principals, um, and other administrators have met on at least two occasions to come up with an agreeable calendar. Uh, in fact, had a conversation with, with um, superintendent Colkeen just before our meeting today. Um, and we really aren't coming to an agreement on, on a school calendar when it revolves around the half-days. I understand, um, superintendent Colkeen's rationale behind it. Uh, it's about professional development. They want professional development for their teachers and staff, and I certainly support that. We want professional development for our teachers and staff as well. But the calendar, as is published this year and as proposed to be published next year, um, is really problematic for our students. Um, it equals to about a month at a school in timeframe, and that doesn't take into account other disruptions that just happen to occur in a school year that are no one's fault, uh, such as sending school testing. You saw S P A C testing on the list, um, delays, weather events, et cetera, um, class meetings, you name it. So when you add all that together, you know, a lot, students are losing a lot of time, uh, in their programs, and it's very frustrating to our staff, um, and teachers. In fact, I have a letter that the teachers has, have written, which I'll forward to the board chair uh, regarding how they feel these half-days are going, uh, for them and for their students. And it's, you know, I don't know what kind of resolution we're gonna have. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, um, that there, there's some real displeasure, um, with the amount of half-days that are in the school calendar, um, from various folks. Uh, again, I understand the need for professional development. Uh, it's just the amount of time the students it's really, it's really an equity issue, uh, for, for our kids. So I'm happy to try to answer some questions for you. Uh, the calendar has not been published yet, still in draft form, um, and it still can be worked upon. Um, but I want to just let you know that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where we're gonna come to an agreement on it. And uh, with that, I have been told directly, um, by our sending schools, meaning non-Mount Anthony, that if a calendar similar is adopted this year, that they will likely stop sending kids to the tech center, uh, because it's, it's too much time out of there. Um, and I don't, I don't look at it as an idle threat. I look at it as a, they're telling us, like, these schedules don't work for us. You know, it's already tough to get kids down to the tech center to begin with. And New York State, Who's At Falls, has very different requirements for their school year. Um, and this type of calendar does not work for them either. Um, and you know, they pay tuition to us in the semester in which they um, come to us and they pay a lot of money for um, tuition to come to our school. Um, it's, it's just very problematic. There's no simple answer to all of it. Um, we have run a lot of scenarios ourselves, including running a full school day um, and just running a school day at Southwest Tech, and logistically with the number of students, that is just impossible, um, to do. We did it during the pandemic, as you know, but it was on a staggered basis. We did our own transportation to pick up half of our kids, half of the days. So we're not talking the same type of scenario at all. Um, we're talking transportation for anywhere between two and four hundred students, um, if we were to run a full day. And uh, I don't want to get into all the details of that because it's really complicated. But I wanted to bring you aware because many of you have talked to me about it. Um, and the teachers have talked about it, and I assured them I'd bring it up at our board meeting today, um, as an awareness issue. And I can forward that letter to Ken, uh, when we're done with our meeting today. Can I answer any questions about that? Okay, uh, next on the list, uh, I would like to welcome you back to the assembly room. Uh, it's been a couple of years, a year and a half ago since the flood. And um, so, uh, we're just about back in business and they're not totally, uh, those nice tables you're sitting at, those are built by students in building trades. Um, we did not buy them, they built those tables for us. Uh, there's one more, one more coming. We're one short. And that's really nice to have the students involved. Um, as you also know, they were able to build some of the cabinets and things and some of our classrooms from the floods, uh, because ordering them would take forever. So they did custom-built cabinets in a lot of the classrooms in the flood. So I want to thank them for that. And I'd like to thank, again, the community for supporting Southwest Tech, um, prior to the Grid Development Center for all these years in our budget. Um, and our support for our students. I think we continue to move forward as a center, uh, in the work that we do. I hope that you enjoy the student spotlights that you see weekly in the news guide. Um, if you haven't, pick up the news guide, it's free. Um, you'll see a Southwest Tech student spotlight in there just about every week. Uh, we are gonna also start spotlighting alumni in there as well as our faculty and staff. Um, that has a wide reading, a wide viewer pool, um, particularly in the Northshire, and uh, again, you can sign up for free online if you like with the um, the news guide, it's free for everybody. So I read it electronically and enjoy it each week. Um, that's what I have for my report. I'm happy to take any questions anyone has.
Okay, Chair, Chair report. I had asked the superintendent, uh, if he would set, set up some visitations to the various majors like auto mechanics, uh, forestry, cosmetology, where we could actually go there for fifteen minutes out of our meeting and speak with the uh, instructor and see where the education is going on, and we said we'd be setting those up in the future. So I think that's nice to know what's actually going on on the school board, but it's nice to know what's actually happening in the classroom. So that's all scheduled. As the superintendent mentioned, those half-days, um, we have twelve half-days with the skiing in Arlington. And we have eight half-days according to the contract with the teachers. So that comes up to twenty half-days, which equals four weeks of education that our students are getting a quality education. So uh, myself, I'm gonna write a letter, email, I should say, to Mr. French, the commissioner of education, uh, as a citizen, not as a school board, but as a citizen, uh, asking that you would intervene with this, uh, setting up of our calendar to help us out a little bit. Uh, what I don't understand is that because Arlington decides to go ski, which is perfectly in their right to do it, uh, the rest of us have to. I remember when uh, Paolo had to change or sell all their school buses because everybody else had two furs of transportation, and it wasn't fair that Paolo had their own. So I don't see why we have to jump and uh, have half-a-days myself, you know? It just doesn't make a lot of sense. So uh, that's my view on that, and then I welcome any of you that would like to send a letter, Commissioner French to intervene as well. Yeah?
I'd like to go one step further. That not only have, uh, the chair go out with an individual, is that we make a motion authorizing the chair to represent the technical center in terms of a letter to be coordinated with the superintendent with the further consent on all, on behalf of the uh, Southwest Tech uh, board. The concerns we have with the number of half-days that we are having to deal with and how problematic it is for us. So I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
If you're okay? Do you need me seconds? Any discussion?
Is this something that, um, like we get the chance to review and like, sign on to, or is the idea that we sort of give you the authority?
What I'll do is I'll put a letter together with the superintendent, and they have the ability to send a copy out to everybody. And then once we get the okay or changes or whatever, then we'll forward it to the uh, commissioner. All right, well, everybody, everybody gets a say. Okay. And yet the next thing is all in favor?
Do we have a, a suspense date? In other words, like, two weeks from now?
April first.
Yeah, but he said they can make adjustments after that, too, just that they
Well.
I'll tell you, yeah, we're gonna be for April first.
We'll get it done before April first. April first is the deadline that by state law that the calendar has to be published by. So.
Okay, this is something my, my, comes up myself. I subscribe to the Berkshire Eagle, not in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. And in reading that, McCann School, which is a school, trade school down in North Adams, received a three hundred, excuse me, a three million dollar grant from the governor of Massachusetts to build a one thousand square foot building next to theirs on their own property for HVAC, trading, electricity, and plumbing. Because there's such a need for these job skills. So what I'd like to do is, again, this is on my own, I don't think we get a full letter because no one else reads the Berkshire Eagle, but I think I'm gonna send one to the governor, ask him, he's got all this money that they got this HARP money, I guess they call it. For the government, if he could, you know, send us some money, we could build a small one thousand square foot building here and get some instructions. Just, I was reading, most of the plumbers and electricians are fifty years old and over in Vermont, so that means in ten years, you know, we would be really hurting now for plumbers and electricians. And I, I think this is a great skill to governor completely, he's always saying that we need these trade people, we need these trades, it's time you put your money where your mouth is. You know, if you got all this extra money, let's come and help. And we do have representatives here that have been, the governor has questions, you can ask. That there is a need for these people. So I think I will personally send one, but
I, I think we should do the same thing that, that Leon suggested for the calendar. I think it should be a motion and you should write it for the board.
And if I could just chime in, I think that's a nice idea. I, as the board knows, we've talked about expanding our programming, whether that's to the, particularly to the Northshire. But our building, we are out of space, definitely. There's, there's no space left we had inside Southwest Tech for, for classes or anything else. We are at max capacity as far as room use goes. So if there, if there are funds out there that would allow us to have a small addition or something, I, that would be very welcomed, quite frankly.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna wanna make a motion, but I, what I wanted to say is that what I wanted to make sure is that this, this is something that needs to actually still go to the education committee to start looking into it, following it up, because Mike mentioned something about our programs and so along that line. And that's where we need to take a look to hammer out all the details about what it is that our, this technical center may be going for in the direction and what of that money available. So even though we wanted to do this as a, as a board according to the motion and which I would like to do, we still need to follow up on the education committee to talk about the overall programs and things and what it is to fit for us and the need for it. So with that comment, I'd like to move and we, again, assign to the chair to work with the superintendent to write aloud to the governor of Vermont, explain to him the need for additional foreign billings for technical education for certain areas that we do not offer. Other ways of making sure that the students that we have coming through here have the opportunity to get those particular trainings.
Again, I'm gonna ask the question, I'm like, in second to your comment, and then comments. I just think it's also time sensitive and Dane, maybe you could tell us whether or not this could fit into this budget for this year in the state, or would it be a project area thing in terms of, in terms of time?
Yeah, so I'd be happy to just kind of describe how the budget cycle within the Vermont legislature usually functions. So typically, the governor proposes a budget in January of the year. It then goes through House Policy Committees. Typically, right around this last year, or I'm sorry, this last week, policy committees have provided their recommendations to the appropriations committee, the money committee, within the House. The House Appropriations Committee will spend the next couple of weeks looking at the budget recommendations as a whole and providing comments, which will then go to the Senate to have that whole process happen once again within the Senate, the state of Vermont. Negotiations will continue, basically until the day that we pass the budget, the day that we adjourn, which is typically in May, in the May summertime. So you know, budget negotiations are ongoing. But yeah, so that's
So how, what time do you think we should present this?
If the intention is to do it for this year's fiscal year budget for fiscal year twenty-four, the sooner the better.
And like, you know, let's do it again next year.
Correct. Correct. And then it could end up actually in the governor's proposal.
So within the next two weeks, right?
Certainly, but, yeah. We're looking for this year. Two letters this week.
Can we do that, Mike?
Yeah, I think, I think this is the further discussion is that if if, if we end up bringing it forward this year, it's always something that, like what Deion was saying, to work with the education committee to really refine what our kind of programmatic goals are with this kind of expansion. And then to maybe revisit this, to have it be within the proposed budget for
Yes, and I, you know, this, Leon's right, and this takes time to plan out these things and to make sure that we do get it right. And, you know, I don't know about the possibility for money this year, like you said, Dane, but, you know, for the, for future. I think we should, something as a, as a school, we should continue to pursue, because we know we need, we know we need it. So.
And we could, we could always write a, this is what we're, we're researching, so that he has a heads up. Right?
Right, and we, and we have plenty of data to supply to, we could easily supply to you through our Perkins Plan. We're required to complete what's called a CLNA, which is a comprehensive local needs assessment. And it's a very long document that goes over each and every program that we have and the labor market information for our county, et cetera. Quite exhaustive, and that helps direct us, I guess, what type of programming we should continue to offer and things, things such as that. And that CLNA will not be written this year. It's a two-year cycle. But next year, when Perkins is hopefully reauthorized again by Congress, I'm sure there'll be some new rules and regulations around that, the reporting and what needs to be put into the grant application. So there is a lot of data, as Meg knows, I can see her, but not too well, in the CLNA regarding what our labor market information says. And that's something that we'll have, we'll have to use that as our baseline going forward, justifying any type of new programming. Change of program, particularly if it's tied to federal funding, just so the board is aware.
Perhaps our letter should really state that we're at capacity and we're looking for another building or another place to, to expand our programs. And not be so specific on what programs we want to expand or add in new programs. Because after, after the study that you do for the Perkins will know which programs need to be expanded.
Correct.
Is that clear? I mean, so in other words, we'd, we'd like the, I mean, I personally would like a letter to the governor giving him a heads up that we're at our own. You know, and, and I think, I think we need to do that within the next two weeks so that he could say to the budget committee, okay, or the budget committee could have that as a also and say, okay, this is gonna come down within the next, but, you know, sometimes they have magic times. And, and we can take advantage of that since we got, you know, in there ahead of time.
The motion was moved and seconded and with the discussion, I, I like to call the question that we have a vote and move.
Okay, I think the superintendent understands.
But we need it, and we need it to be passed.
All in favor of sending the letter to the governor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, one more thing that I know you, obviously, we can keep reading the paper, but I don't know this, the system, what happens in SBSU and Mount Anthony and Southwest Tech, but I know that we have these Chromebooks available to students. Right? Our students can have Chromebooks in those CDs, uh, Southwest Tech.
Yeah, we do, we do not issue one-to-one Chromebooks for students to take home, but all of our labs are equipped with either PCs, Chromebooks, or Macs. And there is enough devices for, for each student in those programs.
How about the Mount Anthony? Do they get Chromebooks each individual there to take home?
I'm not entirely sure. I do know that there is a one-to-one program for a lot of the SVU. I'm not, I can't speak confidently on behalf of Mount Anthony if every student is issued a Chromebook. I'm not sure, Ken.
Oh, it scared me, is that, again, I was reading, last year in Pittsfield School System, they lost a thousand Chromebooks. They gave them out to kids, they never returned them. This year, they expect the same number. And I remember when my daughter was in school here in Mount Anthony and she had one of those fancy electronic calculators in her trig class, or whatever it was, I had to give a blind check to the math teacher to hold on to. If my daughter lost the thing, it would be recovered with blind money. So I just wonder what the procedure is today with Chromebooks. I think if we don't issue them, there's no problem.
Yeah, they're, they're not issued out, no.
That's all I have. Anybody have any comments on any topics such as? So you know, and wanting to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, your math book.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.